Good morning and welcome to the June 13, 2019, business meeting. And I'll ask the county administrator, Gary Schmidt, to please take the role.
Yes, Chair. First staff support today, Stephen Madcor, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, roll call, Commissioner Humberston?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the first item, by the way, if you see a bee flying around here, don't kill it. Could be a pollinator. But the first item is a, what is it, Gary? I don't know.
We have a presentation proclaiming June 17 through 23 as Pollinator Week in Clackamas County. To present is Commissioner Schrader.
All righty. Well, as many of you know, I did start out as an entomologist, and little did I know that over 40 years later, I could still have some influence in, in the environmental world by talking about pollination. And I think the best way to start, I just talked to Mary, is to pull up a special video that'll give us a head start on what that means.
Oh, there's a bee on you.
There's a bee. Well, one of the things we'll find out is...
Pollinators and our gardens. Birds, bees, butterflies, and more. Over 75% of our planet's plants depend on animal pollinators in order to reproduce. And the majority of those pollinators are insects. Today, there is a crisis in the pollinator populations. It is not just the bees that are dying at an alarming rate. The population crisis is affecting all pollinators. Bees, bats, birds, and butterflies have all seen a dramatic reduction in their populations over the past few decades. Healthy habitat for these important creatures has been adversely affected by farming practices, urbanization, and widespread pesticide use. Pollinators are crucial for growing vegetables, fruits, and berries. If you grow vegetables such as summer squash or tomatoes, you know that pollination is the key to getting good fruit set. And not only do the pollinators have to transfer the pollen from the male flowers to the female flowers, but they need to do that multiple times. Without pollinators, our home gardens and small and large farms are in trouble. You can help reverse those declining numbers by planting and growing a pollinator-friendly flower garden that can help the insects survive in both rural and urban areas. Pollinator flower gardens are colorful, attractive, and bursting with life all summer long and easy to install and grow. Most flowers work well for attracting and nourishing pollinators, both in full sun as well as in shade. Plant flowers in groups so that bees, particularly those that target just one flower, can get lots of pollen without expending a lot of energy when visiting one flower and the next. Grouping three or five plants together is more visually appealing in the landscape, too. Creating your own pollinator gardens will help our insect populations recover and will also be beautiful and colorful to look at and enjoy all season long. Here are the most popular and easy-to-grow flowers for attracting pollinators. Sunflower, Zinnia, Salvia, Cleome, Cosmos, Echinacea, Renarda, Rudbeckia, Sedum, Astilbe, Columbine, Hydrangea.
Great. Well, thank you for that. And I want to thank Emily for actually finding this, because I thought it was the perfect thing to talk a little bit about Pollinator Week, which is actually a national week. And also, Oregon is involved in this, and the governor has declared that we're a pollinator state. And June 17 through June 23, we're, I'm asking to see if we can proclaim this Pollinator Week in Clackamas County to join everyone else in the state to move ahead with this idea. So, if I may, colleagues, I'd like to read the proclamation.
Please.
Okay? Whereas pollinator species such as birds and insects are essential partners of farmers and ranchers in producing much of our food supply; and whereas pollination plays a vital role in the health of our national forests and grasslands, which provide forage, fish, and wildlife, timber, water, mineral resources, and recreational opportunities, as well as enhanced economic development opportunities for communities; and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental and economic benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse ecosystems; and whereas for decades, Clackamas County has managed wildlife habitats and public lands such as forests and parks; and whereas, Clackamas County supports and collaborates with organizations such as the OSU Extension Service and its Master Gardener Program and the Audubon Society's Backyard Habitat Certification Program to provide conservation assistance and promote wise conservation and stewardship, including the protection and maintenance of pollinators and their habitats on forests and parklands; and whereas, Clackamas County and its residents and landowners can make management choices that support pollinators; and whereas, Clackamas County has a strategic priority to honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners declares June 17 through 23, 2019, as Pollinator Week in Clackamas County. We encourage all citizens to join us in this observance dated this 13th day of June 2019. So, colleagues, any questions?
Entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we declare this week, I believe it's June 17 through, is it, the 23rd, as Pollinator Week.
Second.
All right.
It's been moved in second that we proclaim June 17 through the 23rd, 2019, as Pollinator Week in Clackamas County. Any further discussion?
Yes, I want to point out just a few things. If you notice up front, I have a poster that I was able to bring in that actually shows all the endangered, you know, species, birds, bats, endangered pollinators. And so, I'm hopeful, colleagues, we can find a place to put that where people can see it to remind us, and again, all the organizations that have coalesced together to really help with this issue. And as you can see, it's very diverse. It's birds, it's bats, it's bees, it's moths, it's butterflies, just a whole number of, great number of creatures that we depend on for our food shed and food supply. And also, there is, I don't know if we can bring that up, there's a Pollinator Partnership. There we go. So, basically, the, these are other ways to support pollinators. You can join the Million Pollinator Garden Challenge. You can join the Pollinator Action Team. You can download, which I've already downloaded, the Bee Smart Pollinator Gardener App, and I have it, I do have it on my cellphone, and I've been using it myself. Pollinator Week, we're ahead of the game in that. It's to get the importance of pollinators message out to as many people as possible. And there'll be many, many events during the week. And then to donate to pollinator.org. And then like, like the Pollinator Partnership on Facebook. So, this is available for folks. I hope you take a look at it, and I hope, particularly during the week of the 17th through the 30th, that you use some of these opportunities to support our pollinators. So, there we go.
Great. Commissioner Fisher?
I just really appreciate this. Clackamas County is a unique county because we are urban, rural, suburban, we have all aspects of what creates a community. And this effort is important because protecting our food source is fundamental to our quality of life and our very survival. So, for us, with all of the competing factors, to take this step and to declare this week, to join this effort is so important. And if not for Commissioner Schrader really educating us, I wouldn't have known that this week should be Pollinator Week. So, I am so thankful for you and your advocacy.
I appreciate that, and I'm going to encourage folks to, actually, Costco, they have mason bee houses. Now, it's a little bout, it's a little late for the bees to, actually, they've already done their thing, so they'll be emerging next year in early March. But if you get your pollinator houses, the mason bee houses early, keep them for the year, put them out, then you can also help the population survive, so.
Okay, Paul?
I just want to say that in my eight, nine years here at the county as a commissioner, I've certainly been on a lot of people's properties who happen to keep bees or beekeepers. And I do know that our former finance director, Mark Gonzalez, was a beekeeper. And he expressed to me, when I talked to him in detail years back, that there are some people here at the county, maybe they're, maybe they're still here, or maybe they're retired, but we're also beekeepers. But I know a lot of, and I don't think that they're, all that is organized or knowledgeable about who all are connected or interested in beekeeping or doing that. But I don't know if there is a means of actually organizing them, or at least letting them know that there's a, or create a hub for beekeepers. But, but this is something that I, I'll just tell you, I've been on a lot of properties, and bees don't bother me. And we had to walk through a number of properties, putting up campaign signs, for example, where you discover, by the way, there's a whole bunch of bees, you know?
Yeah.
And, and you just walk right through them, and you don't bother them, but you be careful that you don't bother them. But I just say that maybe there's a way to get in a hub.
Okay. I think that we can put that on our agenda. I'm seeing our, some of our folks out in the audience, Evan's out there, so that's probably something we should talk about. And honeybees really do rarely sting in the field. And even when you approach a hive, if you do it carefully, it's rare that you get stung. If you kind of go in and really immediately disturb it, that's when, then that's when the havoc, because if you get one bee sting and a few bee stings, they release a pheromone that indicates to the hive that they're being attacked. So, there's all kinds of research on honeybees. It's really kind of fascinating. But I won't go into that now, because I could probably talk about it all for hours.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Ken?
It's easy to get. I got it.
You got the bee app?
Bee Smart.
Bee Smart.
Yep. Easy to get on your phone.
Yeah, I, my neighbor across the street has hives. He's getting treatment for it.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. But I have all kinds of fruit trees. I happen to think you should plant trees you can eat from, so I have lots of fruit trees. And, so I'm very cautious about what I use on the fruit tree. Because Wilsonville had a big kill-off.
Yeah.
A number of years ago. But also, the weather this year, he lost one hive because it got warm, the bees came out, and then it got cold, and they didn't make it back to their hives.
Yeah.
But the farmer's market that I used to run in Milwaukee, we had a swarm fly in and get, connect to the tree, and the honey guy came and took it down.
Yeah, he just took it down and gave him a hive.
And walked away with it. And that was, it was quite, I'd never seen anything like that. It was a big swarm, too. Took it home and put it in his hive.
Yep.
They were out searching, I guess. Anyway, it's moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
We're next on to citizen communication. And Les Poole, please join us. Morning, Matt.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Clackamas County. I always, I always identify myself that way. That way, I have 420,000 neighbors instead of just 10. Great presentation, you know, we take bees and all kinds of things for granted. And when I saw that, I started thinking about a couple of experiences I had a few years ago. I never really spent that much time with Mac Woods, but I remember the night that the county rodeo out at the fairgrounds was going to take, you know, kind of start. There was a huge beehive in the tree. Anyone that goes out to the fairgrounds, there's a tree at the end of the grandstand. Mac Woods got on a ladder, went up there with the crowd and all the commotion, cut the thing down and walked away with it so that the rodeo could go on without everyone standing. And then, about a year later, I got a phone call from him, because he knew I was in Salem for some reason, and, oh, he said, "Come by the farm, I got all this produce, you know, more, I'm throwing it away, come and get some." So, when I showed up, there was the beehives. And we walked over, and I'm like Paul, I've spent a lot of time around property and done a few campaign signs. So, yeah, I'm fine with the bees. And low and behold, Mac says, "Well, do you notice when they land at the hive, they land on the front porch, and then they go in?" And I'm watching, and they are, and he says, "Now, now..." I help him, and he goes over and he puts his finger down, and they get on his finger, and then he sets them inside the hive. So, it's really interesting, the way that guy was out on the farm. It was pretty like, whoa! So, I appreciate the presentation and sharing some interesting memories. I wish I could talk about Damascus. I'm sure you do, too, but I only want everyone to know that the legislature and the county's in a really rough spot. And it's a situation where we've got a legal issue, legal issues that are going to play out. And I just hope everyone respects that. That, that's just generally a comment to folks that are caught in this zombie situation, as Commissioner Schrader accurately described it a couple of weeks ago. I happen to be one of them. I wanted to share with folks a reminder, and it might be a heads up to those who don't know about it, the bridge at Gladstone between, you know, over the Clackamas, that wonderful walking and bike pedestrian bridge, is going to be shut down a fair amount of the time this summer. And the path underneath on the Gladstone side is going to be blocked quite frequently. And it's just now getting hot out, lots of folks are going to show up down there. And when they find the bridge closed, it means you're going to start seeing them sneak over and use the freeway and other unsafe ways to get across there. So, I've, I've tried to get the word out in Gladstone that they've got to upgrade the bridge. It's going to be closed, they got to do it this time of year. And we're going to have tourists and folks showing up on hot days, and we've got to make sure that the safety and awareness is out there. And it's best for the public to find out, "Oh, well, I can't get across it," or "The path is blocked underneath it for a while." And when the public knows that, then they're less inclined to show up and get frustrated or blame you, because it must be your fault that they have to work on the bridge, right? Right? All right. Thank you very much, as always.
Thanks. Who's doing the work on the bridge? Is that a county bridge, or is it a county bridge?
Wes.
Oh, so Wes is doing the work. Okay. Well, the first item on the agenda is a first reading. Gary?
Yes, first, a public hearing, first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 10.03, Solid Waste and Waste Management of the Clackamas County Code, adopting a food waste collection requirement for certain businesses. Evan Polk from Transportation and Development Sustainability Division will present.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Again, for the record, my name is Evan Polk. I'm with the Sustainability and Solid Waste Program in the Department of Transportation and Development. Here to give you a brief synopsis of the ordinance that's before you today for a first reading. What you see before you is a culmination of about four years of research and about two and a half years of policy development and stakeholder engagement conducted at a regional level. Last year, Metro passed an ordinance that requires us and cities within the UGB to adopt their own ordinances to implement a food waste collection requirement for businesses. And Metro's timeline has us required to adopt that ordinance by July 31. And we are on track to, to meet that deadline with this hearing today and another scheduled for early July. In adopting this ordinance, we're essentially stating through local and regional policy leadership that the tens of thousands of tons of food waste that we generate every year don't belong in our garbage or ultimately in the landfill. Instead, we should be seeking ways to reduce our food waste, donate edible food to those who can benefit from it, and then get remaining food waste into a process that repurposes it into clean energy or an organic compost. This ordinance also takes another step towards Oregon's 2050 vision for materials management, which simply states that Oregonians in 2050 produce and use materials responsibly, with the intent of conserving resources, protecting our environment, and living well. This ordinance will not prohibit all food waste from going into the garbage in Clackamas County. It focuses on food waste that's under the control of organizations and businesses that prepare, serve, process, or sell food, and only those in the metro-urban growth boundary. A business does not have to address food waste generated by its customers under this ordinance. This ordinance says that if your business generates 1,000 or more pounds of food waste per week, that by March 2021, you need to start participating in food scraps collection, which is a service that's already available in unincorporated urban county. On average, just to visualize that, 1,000 pounds of food waste might fill about four roll carts. So, if you generate that much per week, you need to start participating by March 2021. It's a phased ordinance, has three phases, and in the last phase, it requires businesses that generate 250 pounds of food waste per week to separate it. And that's, the deadline for that is September 2023. If your business already gets your food waste to, let's say, a farmer to feed livestock, that's great, you can keep doing that. This ordinance does not affect sustainable alternatives that may already be in place. Just a word about the outreach and engagement that happened. As this ordinance was developed, Metro put a lot of effort into outreach and engagement across the region. Here are a few things that they did. They distributed a survey in partnership with the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. They reached 360 businesses with that. They conducted one-on-one meetings and presentations with several food-related businesses that operate in Clackamas County, such as Albertson Safeway, Bon Appetit, BOMA, the Building Owners and Managers Association, the Clackamas County Business Alliance, North Clackamas Chamber, Costco, Elmer's, McMenamin's, Northwest Food Processors Association, the Northwest Grocers Association, Providence Hospital, Sherry's, Walmart, Willamette View, that's a few. They also hosted a roundtable for the nonprofit food rescue agencies that wanted to understand how this ordinance would potentially relate to their food donation efforts. Metro held three notification and public comment periods as part of this process. In fall 2017, letters went to more than 2,000 potentially affected businesses throughout the region. Our staff also distributed postcards for businesses that we work with. Only 40 written comments were received during that first public comment period. 20 were supportive, one was opposed, and others just had suggestions or questions. Metro held two more public comment periods in 2018. Metro has also agreed to support this effort in ways that will help reduce costs to our franchised collectors. I'll highlight a few of those. Metro is going to maintain a commercial food fee at their transfer stations that is $31 less than the cost of garbage disposal. They're going to provide a significant boost in technical assistance funding, which is based on a target that our team should have the resources to provide up to 20 hours of technical assistance to a business that's covered by this ordinance. That will allow us to help them over multiple visits to establish the service, train their employees, and verify that things are going as intended. Metro is also going to make payments to franchised collectors to reimburse them directly for any added travel time costs if collectors need to go to Metro Central Transfer Station because Metro South is not available for commercial food transfer. Metro is also going to cover a substantial portion of the cost of the in-house containers that we will be giving for free to businesses to help them collect food waste in-house before getting it out to a container. I'd like to ask Kelly Stewart, a senior analyst in our program, to provide just a few more words about how we help businesses that might be covered by this challenge. And, and that'll wrap up our synopsis.
Hello, commissioners. As stated, I'm Kelly Stewart. I work on Evan's team, a senior sustainability analyst that coordinates our business outreach efforts. As part of the Clackamas County Recycling Partnership, our team provides technical assistance to businesses in the cities as well as unincorporated areas of Clackamas County. We have several years of experience helping businesses set up food scrap collection programs and have guidance, such as this pamphlet, as well as one-on-one assistance and containers at the ready. Any business that we think that will be impacted by this ordinance will receive ample notice from us or the city, plus an in-person visit to discuss the requirements. We offer free training, as well as work directly with the franchise collector to facilitate the setup and address any problems that might arise. Additionally, a business may request a waiver from the county if compliance creates a hardship, for example, requiring an unreasonable capital expense, or if there are clear physical limitations.
So, that's a quick synopsis of the ordinance and what it will do. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ken?
I just wanted to comment on one thing. Oftentimes, government has to make decisions that put a burden on others, particularly businesses, and don't often, don't always take into consideration the impact that burden may have on the businesses. I wanted to commend you for the efforts that you are making in this ordinance to help the businesses adjust and reduce the costs to them and the burden to them. Whenever possible, if we have to make rules and regulations like this, we should approach it that way. And I just want to say, I appreciate the efforts that you put in to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing the crowds staying back, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move. We read the ordinance by title only.
Second. Moved and seconded that we read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 04-2019, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 10.03, Solid Waste and Waste Management, adopting a food waste collection requirement for certain businesses.
Okay, any further discussion? Do the commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Seeing none, I'll announce that the second reading is Thursday, July 11, at our regular business meeting at 10:00 a.m. The next item is, Gary?
The second public hearing is a second reading of ordinance number 02-2019, amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan. Nate Boderman from County Council and Dave Queener from the Development Agency will present, just like, just like Dave will present. Thank you, Dave.
Good morning. Dave Queener, the program supervisor for the Development Agency, and we're here this morning to have the second reading of the ordinance that amends the Clackamas Industrial Area Urban Renewal Plan. The first reading of the ordinance took place at the board's business meeting on May 9. The amendment to the plan is necessary because Happy Valley is considering adopting an urban renewal plan where the boundary would encompass 172nd Avenue. This area is currently within our Clackamas Industrial Area Plan, and an area cannot be in two plans at the same time. So, by amending our plan, it allows Happy Valley to incorporate it into their area. There are no other projects in this area that the agency has to complete, and we are no longer collecting any division of taxes in this district as well. And I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you might have for me today.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing, and I have two people who would like to testify, Elaine Howard and Ben Bryant. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Elaine Howard. I'm the consultant helping the city of Happy Valley. I'm the consultant helping the City of Happy Valley on their urban renewal plan. They've been working on this plan for the last six months or so, and a representative of Clackamas County was on their work group, developing projects for the plan. And as David said, we recognize that 172nd was actually in your plan. The, the key issue here is, does the county want 172nd to get improved? Because at this point, there's no money in your existing plan to do those improvements. The City of Happy Valley is wanting to include it in their plan to be able, allow them to spend. Right now, we have in their plan about $16.6 million on improving that roadway. However, if you don't remove it from yours, the City of Happy Valley may not include it in theirs. And I suspect they will still go ahead with their urban renewal plan, they just won't have this roadway in it. So just wanted to reframe that issue for you. It's really a consideration of, are you going to allow the City of Happy Valley to go ahead and spend that amount of money to improve that very important roadway for the entire county?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. Again, Ben Bryant, Assistant City Manager, Happy Valley. First, actually, I want to thank, he already left, Evan, on your last item. He actually came to Happy Valley City Council and gave them a great presentation, so I just wanted to publicly thank him for that. Not to, I just want to reiterate a little bit of what Ms. Howard mentioned. Again, the question is, should, should we include 172nd in our urban renewal plan? And really, we've been all advocating for the C2C corridor. This is a very critical section of that corridor, and this would allow us to dedicate some funding to improve that section of roadway. Even though the urban renewal plan is not before the Board, I know there were two issues that were raised in the last meeting that I wanted to make sure that we highlight. The first was parks, and I think we circulated some language. There was some concern that there was in our plan, there are some dollars for acquisition of parkland, and just given the uncertainty and the litigation going back and forth, I wanted to reiterate, we do have in our plan that that money for park acquisition would not be spent without the authorization of NCPRD, or the litigation issue is resolved. So that is in our plan, black and white, right there. Second issue, something that was brought up in our presentation last time, was some questions about affordable housing. In our comprehensive plan, we have several goals to encourage affordable housing, and we actually have a development code section that provides incentives to developers to build affordable housing. We have incorporated some of that into our urban renewal plan based on your input, so I just wanted to acknowledge that we did do that. And I think we sent you a, some, some amendments that we are planning to include in the plan on that. Interestingly enough, I don't really know much, but since we last met, we got approached by an affordable housing developer who's interested in some property on 172nd. And so again, I don't know much, but I know that this road would be very beneficial to that, any projects like it that come up. So just wanted to make sure that you knew that we had done those amendments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? That, I'll close the public hearing, and, just got to read this. So I guess we need to entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only and then have discussion. So...
All right, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we read the ordinance by title only.
Second. Moved and seconded that we read the ordinance by title only. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, this is ordinance number 02-2019, an ordinance amending the Clackamas, oops, forgot to turn that off, an ordinance amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, I did have one question. I haven't seen any language changes on the housing issue, and I know that that was a...
I'm looking for it right now.
Did you find it?
No, but I didn't see that when I read the memo, so I just pulled up the memo.
And I, if I understand, the recent surveys that were done are, Happy Valley has the, may have the least amount of affordable housing available to people of, of, of the 15 cities that we have. Was that the case?
Well...
I think this is a serious issue that countywide we need to address.
Yeah, so we funded a housing needs assessment countywide. Most of those reports are out, and we're going to be talking about them at the C4 retreat. But the detailed one, which I read, is that, well, first off, 67% of Happy Valley residents have incomes 120% of the county's median family income. Of course, that means that they can afford, you know, good-sized homes. But Happy, and according to that study, Happy Valley needs a broader range of housing types, such as cottages, small lots, single-family, detached duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and apartment buildings. I don't have the whole report right in front of me, but that's what I read specifically off that report. And Paul, go to Paul.
Yeah, I just have a procedural question. That is that, is the discussion about this going to occur under the ordinance motion that was made or under the final adoption? I want to, I want to make some comments, but I just don't know if now's the time.
Well, procedurally, either one, I think, is acceptable.
Pardon?
I think procedurally, either, at either point in time, is acceptable.
Okay.
Because it's, it's a discussion issue.
Gary?
I'm sorry, actually, you didn't vote. I totally spaced, I apologize. You called for a motion and a second to read by title ordinance, to read the ordinance by title only, but you didn't vote on that.
Correct.
To approve that.
There's still time to discuss it.
Right.
Further discussion, then we vote.
Right, so you want to vote to read by title only, which Mary already did, actually, and then you can discuss...
Oh, I get your point.
I get your point. I see your point. Make a motion again to adopt, and you can discuss again. Either point of discussion is fine.
Yeah.
But you didn't actually vote on the reading by title only.
So maybe the appropriate thing is to vote on, on this now, and then we can get in discussion when we actually talk about the topic itself. That was my point.
Well, I mean, there's two ways to do it. According to this, we, we've made a motion, she read it by title only, and then is there any further discussion? And that's what we're in now. We could vote to, on the motion to read by title only, I mean, in favor or opposed, right?
I'll ask our learned County Council to weigh in, please.
For the purposes of clarity, I would say move it forward with a, the second motion, that you adopt it and get a second to that, and that will bring the discussion to the floor, and you aren't approving it, you're not voting on it, but it will allow everybody to discuss the merits of the amendment in front of you.
Okay. So I'll ask, is there any further discussion on the motion to read the title only? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. Next is to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt ordinance number 02-2019, amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt an ordinance number 02-2019, amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Paul? Oh, yeah, I got my line on, yeah, I was habit there. So I did, and maybe Ben could respond to this. My question I did ask at the last, first part of this hearing here, a few weeks ago, was approximately how many acres would that amount of money you had carved out for purchase of a park, community park, was? And I didn't, I didn't hear a response. I don't know if you have any, if you don't have a response today, that's great, but I was curious.
Commissioner, no, that's really just a placeholder of funding. It was identified as, essentially how we did the project list is, the committee identified transportation projects as kind of the high priority projects in the plan, and then wanted to save a little bit of money left over for property acquisition for primarily, potentially future downtown, and then also potentially a park if and when, on park issues are resolved, but no details were beyond that.
Okay, thank you. I, I do want to just say, just air a few things, so if, if you just indulge me, I probably have maybe a lot to say, but not that much. I remember when Elaine was here, representing Wilsonville, a year ago or so, and I had some concerns about coordination inside and outside the city, and some of our challenges. At that point, it was Stafford Road and some safety issues, and how that responsibility overlapped. And in kind, like here we are today, talking about this, there are a number of things that, you know, I think we could have coordination, or I would like to have seen more. I have tried to actually solicit more conversations about a number of things, whether it's housing, whether there's roads, whether it's, you know, the comp plan you guys are working on, amendment for all the inclusive area from, forgot what you call that, your comp plan you're working on. But there's just so much need and so much opportunity. And as I mentioned last time, we've, Clackamas County has made a tremendous, probably more so than any other city in Clackamas County, a tremendous investment over the years in Happy Valley, foreseeing that that would be a high-growth area for a number of our needs, relevant to everything I've said and then some, which I won't even, I won't verbalize all of those things. But infrastructure is a big issue, and I've been a big advocate infrastructure, whether there's water, wastewater, roads, access, all the things are really, really important. And, and I've reached out to, you know, the mayor, I've reached out to some of the city councilors over time, talking about opportunities to maybe work together. And I was hoping that that, we would have a lot more of that conversation or progress along those lines, more cemented, if you will, you know, more somewhat in agreement. And, and so I find myself really in the same position, right? I find myself in the same position, whether it was the Wilsonville one or this one, is that we need to coordinate better. And I know that, you know, we've made efforts, whether it's a Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, or whether it's opportunities like this, and frankly, it is an opportunity to actually have that and, and, you know, preceding a hearing like this or following a, the hearing like this. So all to say that I, I struggle with this to some degree, that we don't really have that level of coordination, and we don't really have the outcomes, I think, and we want to make, we want to see all that happen, and we want to be good partners. But I, I just don't have the security or the confidence that, that we're at the place, especially on the housing piece, which is huge, a huge, huge issue. And also on, on the south part of the district, the potential district, where we're, where we could withdraw or not. You know, we have a certain amount of opportunity to make some things happen if we, if we don't approve this, and there, but if we do approve it, then we, then we basically pass that responsibility or objective on to Happy Valley. But it's not as clear, I think, as I would like to see it. So that's where I struggle today. Those are my comments.
Okay, so I think that there's an opportunity, which you just said, to talk about coordination. You know, I, there is a huge housing needs, where the needs assessment has just been completed. Communities have really failed to meet Goal 10. A lot of the communities, particularly Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, West Lynn, to meet the needs of Goal 10. And I, I would entertain a motion to table this and take the opportunity to better coordinate our housing, housing needs assessment that we just got completed, and see if Happy Valley can address that. And so I would entertain a motion to table.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the floor that would need to be withdrawn.
You could do a withdrawal with a second on that, or you could have, just vote on the merits of that motion, which is to approve the amendment. Okay?
Okay.
The amendment being?
The amendment, the current motion is to move to adopt the ordinance, which is amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan.
Yeah. And the, and the other option is to...
Withdraw.
To table.
To withdraw the motion. He was talking about the techno last week, is wrong in the motion.
So you made a motion, withdraw?
Not, well, point of order, let me ask the attorney. We have a motion on the, on the floor currently. As I understand it, you can't put another motion on the floor until you've addressed the motion that's currently on the floor. Is that correct?
That's probably right.
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's great.
So my point is, is we'd either have to vote yes or no on this one that's on the floor, or it would have to be withdrawn, and then an additional motion could be offered by a member.
That's what I had said beforehand. A person who moved initially would have to withdraw, move to withdraw their motion, and you'd need to get a second on that as well. You could do that, or you can move forward with a vote on this one and see if it has enough aye votes to, to move forward.
So I'm going to go to the administrator first.
I'm sorry, just in my, my prior life, with my parliamentary procedure experience, affirming what Stephen said, you can, you can vote on this motion and it fails, you can move to table, which supersedes the main motion, because it overrides the main motion, and take that action.
That's what I thought.
So, but you have to do with the motion on the table.
Yeah.
Either by voting and failing it, or making a motion to table, which supersedes the main motion.
Okay, that's what I, that was the clarifying point, so...
We have to vote yes or no right now.
No, he said we can vote to table it.
Oh, okay.
So what we'd be doing is voting to table the motion.
Yeah, I see yours. They're, they're talking.
I understand, I have something, I have a relevant question. The question, so the question is, if we move to, we move to amend, and that passes, not amend, but if we move to table, that keeps the door open, correct?
Correct.
If we, if we vote, and the vote is potentially negative, right, it doesn't pass, that, that really leaves us hanging, right?
It could always bring it back. It could always come back. It needs a second reading, and it needs an affirmative vote of at least three to, to continue this.
So the fastest path towards getting closure to a successful vote, if it's in the future, would be to withdraw the motion and table. Is that correct? Versus voting no on this? Because doesn't voting no on this almost require the process to start all over again?
They would potentially schedule it for a third reading sometime coming up, or if you want further information from Happy Valley, you could table it and set forth what it is you're looking for that might achieve your objectives with this.
Okay, I, I'll withdraw the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, then I would, I would move to table.
Second.
And then I have comment.
Okay, well, actually, there's no discussion when you table it, correct? Gary?
Yes, you're, you're done.
Okay.
We vote on the motion to table. Yeah, that ends discussion, but we could discuss it after the motion, of course. So all those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppo, what did I say? Yeah, those opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The motion is the adoption of the ordinance number 02-2019, amending Clackamas County Industrial Area Development Plan has been tabled. Okay, do you want to have further discussion?
I'd just like my comment, if I may. I had it on earlier, I don't know what happened.
Okay, I turned it off.
Okay, anyway, I think it's only fair for, for, for Happy Valley to understand where we're coming. We've had discussions before about the cities and Goal 10, and, and the, the impact that they have not made on helping deal with Goal 10, which is pretty clear, where it says, "For cities having populations larger than 2,500 people and counties having populations larger than 15,000 people, needed housing units also includes but is not limited to attached and detached, single-family housing, multiple-family housing, and manufactured homes, whether occupied by owners or renters." And at this point, I have seen nothing in the proposal from Happy Valley that addresses that, and that is my concern, is that that get addressed. And I'll leave my comments there, but at least you know exactly what the concern is.
And Sonya?
So I really appreciate Happy Valley coming back from our last, last time we addressed this, and they provided a very, I thought it was a very comprehensive memo. Some questions that I had, as I've been trying to piece together what actually the status is, so there was a reference to the code here that talks about the... is, so there was a reference to the code here that talks about the incentives for developers. So some of my questions are, when was this code put together? How effective has it been? Has it actually resulted in the use of affordable housing? Just a little bit more depth. And then what I can see, which I'm really excited about, which I really want to promote, because affordable housing is so important to the region right now, is how could we use this opportunity for urban renewal to take some capital from urban renewal and possibly use that as leverage for some affordable housing units? I think that coupled with some of the incentives that are there for developers could really help us move the dial. And I, for one, am not interested in, I know there's a short timeframe, I really, you know, it's a challenge for us, because it's like, oh my gosh, we have to address this right now, and, but in a way, it's a real opportunity, because as Commissioner Savis said, we need better coordination. Maybe we can use this as an opportunity to get together real fast and look at how we're connecting. And given that this weekend is our C4 retreat, of which housing is going to be a critical component, we are in the process of the housing needs assessment, we have an opportunity to move, move the dial forward. And through urban renewal, there are opportunities to take some of that increment and dedicate it towards this issue. So those are just some of the bigger pictures, and I just want to make sure that, that we communicate that, so we can continue the conversation.
Paul.
Thank you. Now, for those that are watching or listening in in the future, I just, I do want to just say that Commissioner Bernard, myself, met with the mayor and the city manager and some staff about really the comp plan, not urban renewal per se, but the comp plan and this housing issue. So we, we have really formally brought it somewhat to the table, that it had nothing to do with urban renewal, but it certainly had to do with our goals, or what we stated here today, which is extremely important. And we did it in a way that was, you know, opportunistic and a matter of coordination, both on the infrastructure side, transportation, sewer, housing, and how, how that might look on the comp plan element of this. So everything's tied together, but, you know, we, we have made those overtures, and I, I endorse the, the comments and concerns of my colleagues up here today, and I think this is an opportunity, as I stated earlier.
Martha.
I do agree with my colleagues here, because there, there are various tools you could use with urban renewal, permit buydowns, capital investment, I think, to increase the capacity for affordable housing. And I do remember an incident, I know Commissioner Savis, you were there as well, we were at a housing advocacy meeting, and Happy Valley became the topic of discussion during the advocacy meeting because of the sense that they weren't meeting their goal 10 thresholds. And I do remember defending the city, because it is one of our Clackamas County cities. However, I think that there is indeed some truth to those underlying issues, that indeed goal 10 has not really been met to the fullest and possible degree that it needs to be met. And we are facing such a housing crisis in this county and every part of it, we would be remiss if we really didn't push to really cooperate with our cities to help remedy the problem. And, and I think this is an opportunity for us to work together to make that happen. So I just wanted to support my colleagues. I, I, I've been here a long time. We have invested in Happy Valley very, very considerably through the years, with library, with parks. We built a, you know, probably one of the nicest ballparks, I think, in the region there. We have, we've cooperated in all those arenas, and I hope we can cooperate as we move for, forward, trying to, you know, eliminate the housing deficit that we have in this county. So, thank you.
Yeah, the, Eva, just yesterday, I'm going to build on what Martha's comments were, just yesterday, we were talking with our housing staff on our housing strategy, and we realized that the four areas that were mentioned, where we have a potential developer for affordable housing, happened to all be in the unincorporated area. And the, the board's goal has been, as far as housing and location, is that it's equitably spread across the county. You know, we know, if you look at even the workforce element of this, is that we hear from, from businesses in Lake Oswego and West Lynn, for example, that say, geez, you know, my, I even hear it actually in, in my community as well, a lot of restaurant owners or people that runs service-type industries, businesses, that they need the workforce. The workforce can't afford the housing in the town they live in, and therefore, they need to commute, but there's no, there's no transit. So this is a very complex system overlay issue, where really, a lot of coordination has to happen, and that's why our, our meeting with Happy Valley was on the lines of transportation and all those things that make that possible. But yes, we want to make sure that that is split equitably around the region, and it's not concentrated in any one area. That, that, where people work, they have an opportunity to have affordable housing. So whether it's, we talk about affordable housing, I think there's a lot of confusion of what that really means, but workforce housing falls right in an element, and is something that really makes the businesses in every community, where regardless of their income levels, or how affluent they are or not, it's something that's really important to everyone, and makes, make those businesses successful. So we all, we all win if we have, you know, some balance of housing stock in our communities around the county.
Well, I want to add that I did a calculation the other day, that you have to make nearly $25 an hour to buy a home in Happy Valley. Fred Meyer's employees, there's probably a couple there who make $25 an hour. The rest have to leave town, which has an impact on our transportation. So there's an opportunity for 10,000 homes and 10,000 jobs out in this area, and it's, it's time to talk about coordinating jobs, housing balance. But there's one thing that I think is really important. I think urban renewal actually caused a lot of the problems that we have with putting all the people with low income in one area. We should take advantage of the fact that there is money that could be invested in mixed-income housing, and that could be a duplex, triplex. But I, when I lived in Wilsonville, in Villebois, there was only one single-level home in the whole development when I lived there, one, and it was the hottest-selling thing there was. And since then, they've built apartments. Actually, Wilsonville is somewhere around 40% apartments versus other communities that are somewhere in the twenties or less, according to housing needs assessment. So hopefully, there's an opportunity here to do something great, not only for Happy Valley, but for workers who work out there, and for the citizens in Clackamas County to live and work in their community. Paul.
Yeah, this may be a question for either Ben or Elaine, and that is, and I'm just thinking, processing, that is there, is there an opportunity to expand the boundaries of your proposal of the urban renewal district on the southern part that would open up more opportunities for housing, for example?
Sure.
And, and if so, I mean, why not? I mean, maybe that's, maybe, you know, I'm kind of getting, trying to get towards a solution. I mean, I don't want to close, I certainly don't think anyone here wants to close the door on this. We really want to be able to move forward, but move forward in a way we have the assurances that, you know, some of our mutual objectives are met.
Yeah, so, thank you, Commissioner Savis, again, Ben Bryant, Assistant City Mayor of Happy Valley. There are statutory limits to how large of an area we can have in an urban renewal area, and there's two limitations. One is, you can only have 25% of your acreage of a city as a boundary, and then also 25% of your total assessed value. So the current boundary that we're proposing to the city council, in terms of assessed value, is like 6%, right? It's very underdeveloped, undeveloped area. Land-wise, it's about 22%, I want to say. And the reason it's not, we're not up to that 25, is using our experts. They do say that you want to have some room, you, you don't want to go to the full 25% just in case you need to do an amendment later. Say an opportunity does present itself, we want, and, but we don't know where that opportunity may be. We do want some flexibility to be able to say, okay, here's where that opportunity is, let's grab that area into the urban renewal boundary, so that we can provide some incentive or do something there. If you're at the 25% already, you lose that ability, that flexibility, if you will. So we're pretty close. We, that, our urban renewal work group that did include county staff, looked at, could we go farther south, include the Carver area, and ultimately decided not to. Maybe that's a future area that focuses maybe more on that, the Carver area and housing and all that, that probably is a different purpose, right, than this one, which is much more infrastructure-based.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Martha?
So did, you mentioned your work group with our staff, so did that include any of our housing staff involved?
Dan Johnson was on it, I know that.
Dan Johnson, but no one from our?
From housing?
From H3S that's doing any work in affordable housing?
No, it didn't. And again, the, the emphasis was, at the time, was on transportation, infrastructure. I mean, that was where we were hearing the bulk of the feedback from residents, was we want 172nd, 162nd, Misty Drive, these transportation projects. That's what, that's what our council had been hearing. Transportation, transportation.
And, and Happy Valley doesn't have a housing board or commission at this point?
Clackamas County is the housing authority for Happy Valley.
But the city, but the city hasn't pulled together, I guess what I'm trying to get at, you're correct, any kind of a citizen or city, you know, kind of group with a conversation about this, about what strategies could be?
Not specifically to housing, if you will. I mean, we have planning commission, obviously, and then Pleasant, Pleasant Valley, North Carver, which is that east Happy Valley, former Damascus, we'll get into that, but that's, you know, they've been talking a lot about how does that area look, you know, and, and Chair Bernard, you were mentioning Wilsonville being kind of a 50% affordable housing, that's, that's what, or 50% multifamily versus single-family. That's what's more envisioned for that Pleasant Valley, North Carver, is that's going to probably be 50/50. As we look at our current stock of the units in development, we're already seeing that 50/50 split, but.
Yeah, except apartments aren't affordable housing. Most people, well, they'd have to make, according to what I read, somewhere around $20 to $25 to even rent an apartment. So that's the problem. But I think this is actually a great opportunity to talk about, you know, Clackamas County has been a great partner. We built 172nd, we built Sunnyside, we built all, all kinds of money with, all kinds of things, with urban renewal dollars, that there's an opportunity here to do something special. I think that Wilsonville has taken advantage of that bear land new vision in some of the things they've done. There's an opportunity to partner with Clackamas County to do something special here, so I look forward to that discussion. And we probably start this weekend, but it's going to take a little longer than a weekend. Marth, wait, Paul.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get on my soapbox here, but I do want to just say that the primary reason I ran eight, nine years ago was because of the potential of growth and the need for economic development, and how, all the things that we talked about here today. Knowing that is really important for future generations, that, that we have all ranges of jobs and housing and everything, and the Sunrise Corridor being an important part of that. And what's, what's the most, the biggest city, and the city with the most organization in, in that path, it's Happy Valley. And so that's why I believe the county in past, when they set the Sunrise Corridor vision, that, that's why we made those investments in Happy Valley. So we are, we're not just invested, you know, it's been a long, this has been decades-long amount of our efforts and that. So my que, I hope, I just want to just put this out there, and I'll stop here, and that is that, as you're working on your comp plan, I know you just started that here recently, but that when you get the element about housing, invite us. I would love to, when you get to that segment, I don't know how the agenda looks for your future meetings on, on, on comp planning and zoning, but I would certainly like to, like to be involved in that, and if I can, as a citizen or even a spectator, but at least be in the room when those public meetings are taking place. I'd really appreciate that.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title only. Oops, that's not what I actually say. Read the consent agenda.
Yes. By title only?
No title. It's the consent agenda, that's the title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Foothills Community Church, Molalla Adults Community Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with the City of Gladstone, Gladstone Senior Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of a subrecipient agreement with Hoodland Senior Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Cooperative Agreement between the Housing and Community Development Division and the Friends of the Estacada Community Center for the Re-Roof Project in Estacada. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval to apply for the 2022-2024 Regional Flexible Funds Allocation Grant. Approval to apply for the 2022-2024 Regional Flexible, Flexible Fund Allocation Grant for the Clackamas County Regional Freight Intelligent Transportation System Phase II-B Project. And approval of a contract with North Stanium Paving, Paving Company for the Beaver Creek Paving Package. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval of a cooperative agreement between the District Attorney's Office and the State of Oregon Department of Justice for Child Support Services. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a property use agreement between Clackamas County and the Sandy River Basin Watershed Council. Under Public and Government Affairs, approval of a personal services contract with Summit Strategies Government Affairs LLC to provide federal representation. Under Technology Services, approval of a non-disclosure agreement with the, with Verizon Business Network Services for shared network information. And under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, we have approval of a resolution for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District's supplemental budget and transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2018-2019. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Is there any further discussion? With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Point of order.
Did we make a motion?
Do not make a motion.
Oh, okay, there.
Ahead on your agenda.
Okay. I'd ask to entertain a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We moved to second, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you very much. Motion carries. On to the county administrator updates.
Yes, commissioners, one item, and that is what's coming up this weekend, is the annual Portland Pride Celebration, which celebrates and supports the LGBTQ+ community. Clackamas County, for the fifth year in a row, will be participating in the Pride Parade and booths that will be there during the weekend. We have the largest turnout ever of county employees, which is over 80, 80, 8-0, county employees and their families will be marching in the parade. I think most, if not all, of you commissioners will make of your very best attempt, attempt to attend as well. I will be there. We will all be wearing these shirts that we've made. Camera, there we go. So we'll have these shirts to wear, and we want to thank our fantastic staff for their participation. We'll have a booth at the Pride Festival all day on Saturday and Sunday. So commissioners, you're available, you're welcome to stop by, and members of the public, we invite them to stop by and see all the great things Clackamas County has to offer to all of our communities. This, of course, participating in the parade is, reflects the county's commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion, and my own personal commitment as well. I thank our Assistant County Administrator Emmett Wheatfall for his efforts in general on equity, diversity and inclusion, but for this parade, and our Queers and Allies Employee Networking Group, that really did all the work to put this weekend together, along with Public and Government Affairs. So that's my good news for this week.
So I have one suggestion. Last year, I could not find the booth. If somebody could, like, draw a little map and hand it out, I looked for a half hour for that, I think it was last year, half hour for that booth, walking back and forth, I could not find it.
We will get that for you.
It'd be helpful.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and we're on to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to share a story with everyone. There is a gentleman that I have seen multiple times on Highway 43, Willamette Drive, across from the Walmart there at Cedar Oak. I don't know if any of you have seen him there, but he is often there in the morning while I'm driving into Oregon City, and sometimes I see him there in the afternoon, and I have wondered, is he there to catch the bus? Because there's a bus. Because there's a bus stop there, but he has a cart full of things, and he's just often there. So, yesterday, or maybe it wasn't yesterday, when was the first day of our heat wave? Was it yesterday, the day before yesterday? Day before yesterday. I get all my days mixed up as a, as a Commissioner. The day before yesterday, I was driving through to go to a meeting downtown at about 3:00 in the afternoon, it was very hot, and he was sitting there on a cooler, and he would look like he was wiping his brow, and I just went, oh my, this is, uh, this is, this is tough. I can't, I can't continue to see this. So, I was on the phone with my husband at the time while I was driving, and I said, honey, could you dial in West Lynn, non-emergency, and just get me on with dispatch? And so, he did that. And I talked to dispatch, and I said, there's a gentleman here, and, and I'm concerned because it's so hot outside. And she says, oh yes, we know, he just likes to be there. He's fine, he doesn't need services. And I said, really? He's just there? And he said, yes, we've been there, but we'll go by and do another check because it's so hot. So, later that evening, after I had dinner with my husband, he said, you want to go check on the man on Highway 43? I said, yeah, really, I want to go. I just, I'm not feeling so good about this. So, we went there, and there he was. And so, this was about 7:30 at night, and I pulled over, and I just said, hey, you know, how you doing? And he, uh, we had a nice conversation, and he had explained that he is from the Florida Keys, and that he, the Florida Keys, and he goes, and he's there because he wants to meet people. And he, we entered into a conversation, we had a wonderful conversation about the meaning of life, the purpose of life, resentment, that you shouldn't hold on to resentment, that you should love your neighbor, that there should be kindness between people. We went really deep, really quickly. And I then come to learn that there's a whole Facebook following for Billy Beaver from the man, from the island of the Keys. And Wes Lynn neighborhood, they have, in their Wes Lynn chit-chat on Facebook, they have conversations. People have posted numerous pictures with Bill from West Lynn, and, you know, and I want to ask Mary to put the picture up of Bill, because I have, I took a picture, I did not post this on, oh, you don't have it? Oh, that's too bad. Okay. So, I took my picture, I did not post it on Facebook, but when you look at Bill from a distance, he really, he looks like a person who's struggling with houselessness. But when you get up close, he's very, his shirt is completely pressed, beautiful white linen shirt. He is so well put together, and it just really struck me, is that if Bill didn't look so good, if he didn't, wasn't so well groomed and so approachable, would he meet people on that West Lynn sidewalk? And that's something that has troubled me, that I think about that. And today, after this meeting, after we have strategy, I'll be heading out for the Governor's Commission on Senior Services. They are meeting here in Clackamas County. And homelessness and houselessness for our seniors is something that's a very, very important issue with the increasing number of seniors and the increasing constriction of the cost of housing. It's a serious issue. But I'm going to hold Bill Beaver's message in my heart as I carry on as county commissioner, that kindness and caring for one another is absolutely paramount, and we in Clackamas County, we do that. West Lynn community has embraced him as they embrace the others in their community, and it makes me really proud to be part of our county, so, that's it.
Now, where was this, so I can stop by?
Yeah, yeah, stop by. It's on 43, on, so, if you leave, go through West Lynn, and there is Walmart on the left, there is, so just right there, he's just, he's just been there, so I've seen him there. And you can go to his Facebook page, Man of the Islands, Billy Be, Billy Beaver.
All right.
Yeah. Oh, no, Human of the Keys is what it's called, Billy Beaver. He's got 2,700 followers, he's met people all over the country, and everybody is touched by this man. He is a true gem.
Martha?
Well, that's a great story, that's a tough act to follow. We'll have to wave to him to stop by then, as we drive, I think we drive back and forth on 43 pretty frequently there, too. Any case, it's been a really busy week for me, and in no particular order, I was there with my colleagues yesterday morning with the Clackamas County Business Alliance, where Bridgette Daisy, who is the Director of the Clackamas Workforce Partnership, I'm a member of that workforce group, as a designated elected official, talked about workforce issues in Clackamas County and in the region. One of the things that we are dealing with at both the federal level and the state level is diminishing funds for workforce. I did lobby in Salem concerning the higher education and community college budget to see if they could restore some of the dollars that went directly to workforce. We'll see what happens. You know, at this time in Salem, anything can happen, and most of us wait for the, the end of the session when they do what they call the Christmas Tree Bill, to see if any of our last minute requests get added to the budget. Speaking of Salem, I had an opportunity to join Representative Mark Meek this past Sunday at a town hall at the Oregon City Library. The discussion really centered around purse reform, education, and also healthcare. So, it was a great group of people. We really had a good discussion, and I wanted to thank him publicly for inviting me to be there. But before I went to see Representative Meek, I, I missed some of my colleagues, but I did stop by. The boring strawberry grain breakfast, that is something that all of us try to make, one at one time or another, because it's fresh strawberries with delicious waffles, so I'd like to thank the Grange for that. This past Monday, I was at the Association of Oregon Counties, we're beginning to wrap up Salem, getting our updates, and we are actually planning our Association of Oregon Counties Retreat here in Clackamas County on August 11th and 12th. And colleagues, I invite you all to join us, we're going to go kayaking on the river and actually take a look at the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and the Willamette Falls locks, but potentially from a distant, a different perspective. It looks quite different from the water than it does on land, but we will also have land tours for those of us that don't want to get our feet wet in the Willamette River. Good news, actually, I think it's, I'm looking at our county administrator, it's public now, isn't, is it not?
It is public, yes.
Yay, okay, because Commissioner Savas and I have been working on the legacy project for a number of years now, and we just learned that the Grand Ron Tribe has, is purchasing the site. That is good news for everyone. My understanding is that there may be groundbreaking on the legacy, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, the River Walk in the fall. We're keeping our fingers crossed that that's on time. This is a world-class, game-changing project, and working with the tribes on the redevelopment of that, of that area will be a wonderful, a wondrous thing to see, so happy about that. We are still working hard concerning the Willamette Falls locks. We've been lobbying, I did receive a call from Governor Brown about the status of our dollars on that bill, and we're all keeping our fingers crossed. She has continued to keep 7.5 million in her recommended budget, and we are trying to work with a number of the, our local legislators to make sure that that stays there and that we move forward, so we can actually have the Willamette Falls locks be a part of that whole area that we hope will be a heritage area up and down the river sooner, sooner than later. Other than that, I just want to remind people, the Development Services Building, it's the first day that we are having our farmer's market here on campus, and there's strawberries, there's rhubarb, there's asparagus, I think there's cherry, so, I don't know about you folks, I think I'm going to head over there before I, I go, I go do the filming I'm going to be doing to talk about the locks. And I just wanted to let people know, I didn't start out to become a Commissioner, and actually in my early days, I did teach beekeeping at Shemeka the Community College when I first moved here to Oregon, and I taught pollination ecology at Lewis and Clark College, because I had started on a totally different education track, but lo and behold, who knows what life will bring you. Okay, our word of the week. No surprises there.
Gee, why are we not surprised?
No one is shocked and amazed here. Pollinate to carry out the pollination of, to mark or smudge with pollen. Did you know that pollinate was first used in the late 1870s, and many plants and flowers are pollinated by bees? And take a look at the poster that we have up front, front there to show you the bees that are pollinators. Arts and Culture Activities in the County, Arts Council of Lake Oswego's 50th Annual Chronicle Plain Air Exhibit Friday, June 14th to Sunday, June 16th, from sunrise to sunset, various locations around Lake Oswego. The Arts Council of Lake Oswego is pleased to invite artists, residents and visitors to enjoy one of the region's best plain air events. Otto Storytime Garage at the World of Speed, Friday, June 14th at 10:30 a.m., Wilsonville. Join us for Otto Storytime Garage and get a free copy of Racecar Dreams by Sharon Crisco. And remember, the Lake Oswego Festival of the Arts kicks off on the 21st. I, I have to go to a wedding, so I won't be here for it this year, but, but usually every year I volunteer, so this is the first time in about seven years I've actually missed my volunteering, but next year, hopefully, there will be no wedding on that day, so I'll be able to attend. But I invite my colleagues to attend, beautiful artwork, fun music, there's even beer in the beer tent, so enjoy. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I too tended the boring strawberry breakfast.
It was very exciting.
And, you know, it's, it's, it starts at 8:00 and it goes to 1:00, so I usually put in a couple hours, and this year, I thought I'd do it a little bit different, instead of coming there first thing in the morning, that I actually came in there at 9:00 and worked till about 11:00 or so, or she must have got there a little bit afterwards.
I got, yeah, you guys are the morning people. I go, you know, after about 10:00 or so.
Yeah. So, you know, it was kind of neat, because actually you get a different wave, and I found out that it was actually seemed to be with, with a lot more people a little bit later, it was, that was a lot more fun, so maybe next year I'll try the latter shift. Was it busy?
Yeah, it was good, I had a great time. I was sitting with a family there with a bunch of little kids, and it was hysterical. I had a great time.
Yeah.
And of course, you can't, you know, you've got strawberries and waffles.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyhow, having discussions there with some folks during that time and all the other outreach that we do, myself getting involved and, and listening to members of different parts of communities of Clackamas County, you really realize there's a lot of passion wrapped up into what they envision as a community. And so, yeah, Su, Sunday morning, I got a taste of what's going on, where people are on a few, few issues, and I hope to actually, on Monday night, I think we're having our community leaders meeting, and that's, for those who don't know, that's an assembly of some of the CPO Hamlet Village members around the county. That is Monday, right? I believe, pretty?
Yes, it's Monday.
Yeah, Monday evening. So, looking forward to that discussion and, 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 and thinking about the announcement about Willamette Falls, and thinking about the history, and, and with history, there's, you know, things like archives and, and items and heritage and a number of things that really, that really speak about who we are as, as a region, or as a city, or as a county. So, I really put a lot of thought into that, and just, you know, getting back to, how do we get, we had that work session on the History Hub, or how do we get more money into our museums and our heritage cultural opportunities to, number one, keep some of those archives in good, good form, keep our museums open and so forth? So, I think all it does, we need to have that asset or that mechanism in place, as all these opportunities now are becoming more real, with the successful purchase ideally here of the tribes to purchase Willamette Falls area. That would be huge, I think, and a huge opportunity, but to come up short on this end, I don't think would bode well for any of us. I think we were leaning to step up our game. But I really do want to speak, and we're just recognize maybe that, maybe the chair consider having a, an update somehow on, on the, on the agenda whereby, at least the Hamlets who put together a vision plan for what they wanted to do with their, with their areas, make a presentation, because they were asked to do some work, as were other areas of the county, to put together either a vision plan or a community plan of what they wanted to do. And I know that, you know, Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Humberston were not on the commission at the time, and probably haven't heard that, or maybe even seen that document, those documents. But just want to remind that we do have, there are aspirations, and we need to find a way to see if we can play a role in them meeting their aspirations, so that's what I have for today.
Okay. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think we were going to do something before me, on behalf of Commissioner Fisher, first.
Right. We do have the picture of Billy Beaver from the Florida Keys, so I just wanted to, wanted to show that. That is the gentleman that is there on the sidewalk, and if you get a chance to stop by and say hello, I guarantee you will be inspired.
Great.
He looks very approachable.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does.
Thank you.
Hi, Ken.
You're welcome. All right. Unfortunately, I missed the strawberries this year, usually I go, but we had a, a cousin's daughter graduating from nursing school up there in the Seattle area, and a, another graduation for my grandson, so I had, had to go to those this year. This week, I've met with the Tourism Board, well, excuse me, I actually went to the Climate Lunch and Learn on behalf of Tourism this year, and gave the opening remarks there. For those of you who don't know, we have a, an active climate concern in Clackamas County, and staff are participating in, in, in doing the things that we can do to deal with climate change in our community. I also went to the Stafford, the, the final meeting of, of, of our staff on the short-term housing issue at Stafford, heard some interesting comments from people there. Most of them echoed the same things that we have heard already, the same concerns, and I think there's going to be an opportunity to come up with a solution that will protect the neighborhoods from the concerns that they have without overburdening the legitimate folks in the industry. Went to the CCBA breakfast like everyone else did on workforce. And then Commissioner Bernard and I participated in the Cost of Poverty Experience, which was an interesting exercise. I would say, the thing that I, I got from it more than any single thing was, when we talk to people and we say, you know, why didn't you think ahead? And you realize when you go through this exercise, that when you're moving from crisis to crisis to crisis to crisis, you don't have the time or the ability to think ahead. You're just trying to manage the moment. And I don't know that I ever thought of it in those terms until I went through that exercise. And I hope that I personally never have to experience that, quite frankly. Yes, we have all these services out there, but there's hoops that people have to jump through, there's lines they have to wade in, there's transportation issues trying to get from point A to point B, and then there's the things that come in from the outside, whether you have a, an incident occur on your work site that you had no control over, but it somehow surrounded you and you lose your job. Those kinds of things make it almost impossible sometimes for people to actually do what we would like them to do, which is, quote, pull themselves up by their bootstraps. We need to realize that it's not as easy as we might think it is for some people. Then I went to the, I did go to the Tourism Meeting this week. I will tell you that what I have seen over the last few years continues, from, from 2010 till the present, Tourism has done an excellent job, and, and you can tell that simply by the revenue line that continues to go straight up. They have done an excellent job in promoting our county, which obviously helps the businesses in our county. And then, last night, Commissioner Bernard and I went to Charminow for a community meeting, where we shared with them some of the things that the county is doing. Our Vets Village, which I discussed with them, was particularly well-received. They, they recognized that that is one of the things that we should be doing as a county. And I think I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Oh, yes, that's right, we do have the dog today.
Oh, he's cute.
Yeah.
He's a runner, though, I think.
Ken has a miniature version of this dog.
This is Boomer. He is looking for his forever home. He's a seven-year-old Australian Shepherd who enjoys the finer things in life. He loves to go for walks, he likes to relax in the shade and watch the day go by. He's looking for his new family to be fairly active, to keep him healthy and happy. He would also like to have a soft cozy bed or two for him to nap on. He's looking for a home that has a fenced yard. He thinks that cats are pretty fun to chase. He is really a great learner. If you think that his wants and needs sound like a great fit for your lifestyle, come and meet him today. And on a personal note, I have... And on a personal note, I have this breed, and they are a great breed. They are a lot of fun, they do have a lot of energy, but they are a really loving breed, and you will enjoy a dog like this. So for more information about Boomer or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And say hi to Boomer.
Great, thank you. I'm going to try to be short. The Cost of Poverty Experience that Ken and I went through is really interesting. One of the things is that you don't have time to ask for help. You're just running, putting out fires, hoping somebody doesn't turn off your electricity. They actually had money that you could spend, and I got paid $300 a week in my job, which I don't know what it was. I certainly wasn't the president of a corporation. And then I had a wife who was bipolar, a child who was eight, a daughter who was 21, I don't know, 17, and a son who was 21. But, so that's a pretty big family to live on, $1,200 a month. And so, what, they had some great questions. What would you do in that situation? Well, my daughter would steal from her teacher, steal from whatever to survive, because you know, the eight-year-old was hungry every, all the time, and, you know, what do you do? There, there wasn't even enough time to have two jobs because you were chasing things around. Couldn't open a bank account because of my poor credit rating at the, and this is a play, where we're learning about what.
It's a hypothesis.
Poverty, I have a great credit rating. But anyway, it was, it was a really good experience, but it's kind of like juvenile justice. One thing I learned, when I used to do a lot of juvenile justice, it's, it's a lot of work to get in trouble. You know, all you have to do, even in adult justice, you just have to constantly work. If your child has problems juvenile justice, they, you know, and you have to take them to court, you have to take them in counseling, you got to do all the, it's a lot of work. And it's the same thing with poverty. It's a lot of work just to pay the bills, eat, feed your children. And then we had one car and a bus pass, so.
Yeah, so there you go.
But you'd have to buy gas once a week because you're doing all these errands, and that was 50 bucks. And that, and out of $300 a week, that didn't, that left 250, which wasn't enough to pay our, pay the rent. But I'd say the one thing also I learned is that housing first. I mean, I had to keep those people in their houses, in a, in a house. Otherwise, we'd be on the street, and then there'd be even more work. So it was a great experience. And then, like Ken said, we were in, near Wilsonville. I always struggle with how to say that like I do your name, Charbonneau.
Pretty close, Charbonneau.
Charbonneau, sure, Charbonneau.
There you are.
Which, you know, is a senior adult facility, I mean, community, I'd say. It was very interesting, a lot of questions, not so much to Ken and I as it was to the realtor, to the mayor, and to the golf course guy. We got home at nine o'clock. This was one long day, seven to nine o'clock at night. But it was, it was very valuable. I know that we're doing some good work around here. Vehicle registration fee was one of the things that, no one really had an issue with it. I know people do have issues with it. I know it can be a hardship, $30 a year, $60 for two years. But it was something we had to do. I think Ken explained it quite well. When you think of Portland, Washington County that has, you know, millions of dollars and three or four sources of local road, when Clackamas County had nothing. We just fall deeper and deeper into a hole, which is very expensive. So have a great weekend, see you at the Pride Parade. And with that, we're adjourned.